All right, I think that's our cue. We will call the meeting to order at 7:02. And we're going to start with our agenda review. The agenda has been modified a few times. There's been emails go out. At this point, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as published.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
So moved in second. Any further discussion? There being none, Debbie?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
All right, thanks. All right, next up, we are going to have a presentation from Janet Medina Avila. And she is going to be sharing with us some of the targeted feedback survey options that OSB provides, as well as a few other topics today.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you, everyone, for having me back. I was saying earlier, when I was here last time, it was dark out. So really happy that we're in spring. And thank you again for asking me to come back. So for today, there's going to be a couple of things that I'm going to be covering, and particularly from our evaluation workbook toolbook, the one that we developed with COSA. It's a five-part evaluation tool, as you all know. And so we're going to really focus in on the superintendent goals part, which is part two, and then part four, which is the target feedback survey. And those are both optional, but they're very strongly recommended pieces of part of the evaluation. And so I'll be explaining that more in detail later today, and answering any questions you have around those particular parts of that evaluation tool. And then we're also going to spend some time looking at your evaluation timeline. You have created a really beautiful timeline, which is great. I do want to acknowledge you and give you kudos for having that and starting the process early. So good job there, and happy to give you some recommendations. And you have some documents. And later on, I will give you some time to kind of review those documents, and then we'll have time to discuss. I just have a PowerPoint, but if you want a copy of it, I'm happy to share it afterwards. Usually, my PowerPoints are just mostly images. I like to make my work sessions be as interactive as possible. But if sometimes there are some images or diagrams that you wish to have after the meeting, I'm happy to send those. So don't feel like you need to take all the notes when I'm showing the slides. And then we're going to spend some time on evaluation ratings. What do those scores mean? We spent a little bit of time last time in open session when you did the superintendent evaluation, but we're going to just dive a little bit deeper and kind of make sure we're all on the same page in terms of what that means, and then also around comments and best practices around that. And then we'll just close off with some next steps, some recommended next steps, and then any additional questions you may have. So hopefully about no more than an hour, but it will depend on the discussion. I will stop at an hour, though. Any questions before we proceed? Okay. Let's dive in. So as I mentioned, if you adopt our process, which I believe you are, the workbook for the superintendent evaluation, it is a five-part evaluation tool. And you can see all the information on page four about the tool. We're not going to spend time with the orange. Really, we're going to spend right now time on part two, the superintendent goals, which needs to be agreed upon at the beginning of the cycle, and it's not the same as district goals. And what do I mean by that? So I'm going to show you some examples so that you can see kind of how it is aligned with the district goals, but it is separate. And then I will focus in on part four, which is the target feedback survey. So again, the superintendent goals, which are developed at the beginning of the cycle, is something you agree upon because it is an optional part of the evaluation tool, is different than the district strategic goals. So these are your district strategic goals that you used as part of your evaluation, and you have them posted. I know it's not the exact statement. They were kind of shorthand written for the evaluation process, but I just wanted you to kind of take a glance at that. And then just kind of remind you that it's not the same as superintendent goals. They are different, but they're tied. They should be aligning. It's really more so that the superintendent goals, which are created collaboratively with the board and the superintendent, is tied to professional development to the superintendent, and again aligns with the strategic goal. So what does that mean? So let's take a look at one of your district strategic goals. So here's your district strategic goal. Each student has the social and emotional learning skills to navigate their world. And then the superintendent goal, a potential, because this is just something to get you started and have a discussion about it, is the superintendent will create a positive district culture by engaging with all students and staff. The superintendent will create opportunities for staff professional development around social and emotional learning, and find ways to receive feedback from all stakeholders to ensure all students' needs are being met. So my recommendation for developing your superintendent goal is looking at kind of the summary that you provided to the community after you did the evaluation, and look at what were those key areas that needed maybe just some room for improvement, or that you wanted to expand on? Was it community relations? Because we know that that was an area that maybe had a little bit of pause because of COVID-19 and the pandemic. So maybe that's an area that now you can specify as part of a superintendent goal. So that's what I would recommend when you are discussing collaboratively deciding what these superintendent goals are, if you want them to be a part of this evaluation cycle for '22, '23, that you spend some time kind of looking at what were those areas? What standards were the areas that you felt needed just some room for improvement, or some room for growth? So I'm going to let you just kind of look at those two statements for a second, and then ask if you have any clarifying questions.
Is it typical for the board or the superintendent to put the superintendent goal proposal out? Is it, do we propose one for Mr. Drew, or does he propose one to us typically?
Ideally, the best practice is to do it collaboratively. So kind of just have a discussion, maybe pull out what was, you know, think what standards maybe you wanted to focus on. Sometimes I have seen it where the superintendent will bring a proposal, and then the board just reviews it and then discusses it. So that's another option. But you do want to make sure it's just collaborative at the end, so that way, when you do adopt them and they become a part of the process. Great question. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just, I guess, revoice to make sure I understand. So the superintendent goal is really, its genesis is in the last evaluation, really. That's what's special about it compared to just picking something that, you know, is tied to the strategic plan. It's something tied to the strategic plan, and it was, you know, part of the last evaluation cycle.
That's a great point.
Yep, exactly. So that way, you are targeting those areas. It's kind of a way to hold it accountable, to hold the performance accountable, and then this next time around, you should see that number ideally, hopefully bump up or whatnot in the ratings.
Yeah, and so we had a lot of goals, and we might not necessarily have to have a lot of goals to look at, just really targeted each year. Is that accurate?
So typically, you want at least one to three. So if you have just one, that's fine. Two to three is usually what folks tend to have as best practice. But if you want to have just one, you can have one. But we say at least one to three, yep, if you decide to adopt that piece of the five-part evaluation tool. Question? Any other questions or comments? I want to make sure you understand, so that way, I'm here again to help guide you. We are here at OSBA to support you, and so please feel free to ask any questions. Superintendent, do you have any questions?
Scott. Don't talk, please.
Okay, great. Please feel free to chime in as well.
It's almost like, so, you know, I've managed people and done personal development goals with folks in my line of work for several years. And where I work, we talk about like what and how, like, in terms of, in light of the goals. So you can almost think of it, and I see it as, the district strategic goal might be the what. But Scott's goals that we help him form collaboratively are going to be the how. How is he going to reflect maybe this goal, or one of the other strategic goals that we have for our district? But the big thing I think we can emphasize is that what we're doing is set for, or what we're collaboratively, is more the how, not just the what. So I think that's important, because that tells you how he's going to, you know, facilitate the SEL learning, and gives you some descriptors and key points in there on how it's going to be executed. So I think that's something we keep in mind when we help him with the goals, is really keeping the how in mind.
Yeah, I love that you bring that up, because the district strategic goals, the way that I explain it and that we explain it at OSBA, is that it's setting the direction for the district. And then the strategic plan with the strategies is kind of how that work is going to get done, is defining how to get to the destination. So I love that you said that. So I think that's true. Just be very careful that that strategic goal then doesn't look like the strategic plan strategies, so that, I'm glad you brought that up. Because it is going to be, again, it may align, but it's really focusing on the professional development now of the superintendent. That's really the key difference, is tying it to the professional development. How is Scott going to accomplish that superintendent goal in his evaluation?
Right, Scott specifically, as opposed to the district as a whole?
Exactly. Versus the district goals and the strategic plan, that's like the district and whatnot.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly. And in the form that we have in the workbook, it does have a place to put the statement of the goal for the superintendent, and then some key indicators. So that's where he can be more specific, or together, you can kind of create some specific indicators of how is that going to happen, kind of like you said, Erin.
Right.
I love that you said that. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? So let's move on then to the targeted feedback survey. So that's part four. And so when it comes to the targeted feedback survey, you have to agree to it at the beginning of the cycle, just the same as the goals, the superintendent goals. The board determines the standards and the survey recipients. I'm going to get a little more into the details of that. We administer the survey at OSBA if you decide to do that targeted feedback survey. So we take care of all of the technical logistics sides and sending out reminders to folks that you select. And then we provide you a summary of the results. And I'm going to get more into details of exactly what that summary of results means, and then kind of how that happens. So those are kind of the main parts of the target feedback survey, but really important for you to know that it's two separate sessions, and how much time it's going to take. So there's a planning meeting. And in that planning meeting is typically held November, December. Since you've already started your timeline, you can get ahead of the game and do it in November, and then plan to have folks complete it by January, because December is kind of tricky because of the holidays. And so typically, we do recommend November, December, but we know that more than likely, and the ones I've done in the past, have been more in January. So just keep that in mind. The TFS results, which is then an executive session, not an open session, an executive session where you get a summary of the results, happens typically then later in January or sometimes early February. It really depends, though, when you have your planning meeting, because you need to have enough time for the recipients to respond to the survey, at least two to three weeks. So that's kind of the two separate parts. And the planning meeting is typically about an hour, no more than two, again, depending on the discussion. The TFS results is usually about an hour as well.
And just for clarity, the reason that the results are in executive session is not so much because of the superintendent, but because of the confidentiality of the participants in the survey, correct?
Yes. So the participants, thank you for asking that. And so for the survey, the reason it's called targeted feedback survey is because together, collaboratively, the board and superintendent get to identify who those stakeholders are. We ask for a set of internal and then a set of external folks. So you get to pick that list, send it to us, and then we administer the survey. The survey is anonymous. It is completely anonymous. We let the participants know that when we send out the survey. And so, exactly, it's to keep the confidentiality and ensuring participants, you know, their anonymous responses are anonymous. And it also helps kind of, the reason for the targeted feedback survey, which kind of replaces the 360, if you had done one of those in the past, the reason for that is it kind of helps with avoiding, to not be able to do cherry picking and just focusing on anecdotal quotes of one participant. So that's why it's a targeted feedback survey, and that's why we only provide the summary results, and look at themes, look at overall how many questions, how many were asked to the internal, how many were asked to external folks, because you want to avoid cherry picking or selecting specific anecdotes or quotes. Really good question. And so in the planning meeting, you're going to kind of go through all the standards with your facilitator, and we really kind of highlight areas that would provide further insight. What would be helpful for you to have this targeted feedback survey? So the questions are, you don't get to see them, because it is proprietary information, but the questions are tied to the specific standards that you select, and tailored to the specific stakeholders that you select. So your internal stakeholders are going to get a different set of questions for that, tied to those standards. And then the external folks are going to get a different set of questions, because they're going to have different, they're just, they need to be tailored to those stakeholders. So for example, standard eight, this is one where you have the most probably observation. You could ask for additional feedback from stakeholders, but we'd probably recommend for this one, it's mostly going to be based off your work with the superintendent and your observations. But then a standard like five, for example, communication and community relations, this is one where you would want to probably get additional feedback from external stakeholders, particularly to see how that's kind of going. So that's kind of what we'd walk through, and then we'd let you know what the total number of questions are, depending on how many standards you select. And we typically suggest to pick about three to four standards, and that's just because of the amount of questions. You want it to be manageable for the survey recipients. Here's another one, effective organizational management. That's something where you would want to probably get staff additional feedback. The questions that you do get to see and that you do get to develop are the open-ended questions. We recommend about one to two open-ended questions, and these are just some examples of what that can look like. And that gets developed in the planning meeting as well. And then kind of go over a timeline, and this is great, because you can make it align with your timeline, since you already have been working on your superintendent evaluation timeline for '22, '23. But here just is where you would decide when that planning meeting should hap, or not the planning, when the survey results, you want them to happen, and then we can kind of work backwards to figure out, all right, two to three weeks to give recipients enough time to complete the survey.
Sure.
All right, so now I'm going to ask you, and give you about three or five minutes. You let me know how much time you need. There is a proposal in your packet for the targeted feedback survey. I'm just going to give you time to read that. I kind of explained most of it, but if I missed something, it gives you the opportunity to kind of see that part. And then we can just, you can ask me questions once we're done reviewing it. Okay. Any questions after you kind of looked at the proposal? Anything in particular you would like me to address?
How are the participants selected in general? Like, are we, do we say, well, we need this type of teacher, this type of administrator, this type of classified employee? And then, we're not talking about specific names at our level, right?
You are. So I would need, I would need the list either from the board. The board secretary usually sends me the list with the names and then the emails. And so collaboratively with the superintendent, you kind of agree, okay, what internal folks should we ask, exactly what you're saying. What classified staff, you know, for this, you know, for all these standards? Once you've selected those standards, that's why you do that planning meeting first, then you can kind of be like, okay, what staff would have if you chose the facilities? For example, you're going to need some facility staff folks in there, probably. And so you would kind of determine who those are. And same for the external folks as well. You would have to kind of determine who those external folks are.
So the names of the participants isn't a secret, but the results of what they've provided is.
Right. Yeah, you wouldn't be able to see, then you wouldn't know which of those participants, yeah, said what. Yep.
Right.
Yep, exactly. Yep. And I will say, we are aware that that can be a little frustrating, not being able to even see like the questions of the targeted feedback survey. We understand, you know, we can't see the participants' responses and answers, but why can't we see, you know, just the questions? That is something we are working as a team to kind of identify, now that we've done it a couple, we've done it quite a few times and heard kind of that pattern of concern. Like, we just want to see the questions, like, how are they tied to the standards? Like, I understand we can't see the responses. That's anonymous, that's fine, but what about the questions? So we, as a team, are actually having that conversation very soon to kind of see how we can mitigate that, because we kind of, you know, we've heard that concern, and I can kind of understand. And so, you know, to be determined. That may potentially change in the future. But I am aware, I totally get it, and have heard it a couple, multiple times from other boards.
So looking at the timeline that you also provided, when does the board see the results of the feedback survey relative to when they put together their own evaluation and their comments? Is that a before, is it after, is it simultaneous?
It's typically right before. And again, it depends on kind of where your timeline hits. So usually, targeted feedback surveys are done late December to early January. Again, December can vary because of holidays and whatnot. So usually, it's more like early January, late January. And it might just align, it might be simultaneously, in your case. Sometimes that's not the case, though, because some folks don't have their evaluations till March. So it just really depends. That's why I said, it's so great that you have your timeline and you're starting this conversation, because I think it will end up being almost simultaneously, like, just a little bit, maybe a couple weeks before you actually do the summative evaluation.
I just wonder if it's desirable to see those results prior to our own evaluation or not, in terms of like biasing our responses, or, you know, perhaps just informing our responses, so that we can accumulate? I don't know if there's best practice around that.
I love that you asked that. So you want to make sure that these are kind of taken as single kind of parts. So for your self kind of evaluation of the superintendent, you want to do that just kind of based off your own observations. But then you also have the targeted feedback survey to kind of, when you're having the discussion and doing the summative evaluation, then you look at all those individual parts. But you do, I would recommend, and typically that's what we say, is make sure you're taking them kind of as individual parts. Because, yeah, that's a great point. When you're doing your self-observation, now you have the targeted feedback survey that you can apply, so you want to make sure you're not, you're doing your own self-first evaluation, and then looking at targeted feedback survey, and helping you come up. It's a holistic approach. So it's individual parts that help you kind of determine the overall superintendent evaluation. So that's a really good question.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that, you know, that question brings to mind is, so ultimately, we still, the seven of us, put together the summit of evaluation. So it's really, it's a data point that we have to use when we put ours forward. For example, if we had made our assessment without having seen it, it wouldn't have had any impact on the process. And because it's not public information, it wouldn't be something that we would post and have available for anybody else anyway. So really, it's, I think, unless I'm misunderstanding, its only purpose is to inform us while we are creating our evaluation of the superintendent, I think. That's how I see it.
Yes, it's considered a data source, kind of like you said. Yep, one piece, one data source.
Right. But I mean, I think the point, if I'm understanding, the point you were making is that it might be important to do our own evaluation of whatever that particular goal is, or that the point of evaluation, independent of those results at first, just so we're really going, what do I think of this? How do I feel that superintendent has performed in this area? And then, only after that, look at those, the feedback results and go, okay, an additional data point. Because it would be interesting in some situations to see, was I confirmed in my assessment, or are other people disagreeing with that? And, you know what I'm saying? Like, it would be interesting to be able to compare those when they're prepared independently. But obviously, at the very end, when we're wrapping it all together, then we're taking all of that information cumulatively.
Yep, exactly. Yep. Any other questions or comments?
I do, and it's sort of on a lighter note. It used to be called 360, or I don't know, now it's called targeted.
Yep.
Why the change?
So because, as I mentioned earlier, the targeted is you're really going to target specific folks that are going to, that are going to be tailored to the standards that you pick. So it makes it a little bit more targeted when you're selecting who those internal folks are and who those external folks are.
Okay.
Yep. A 360 can as well, but I think, again, with the targeted, too, what we're avoiding, just the process, I think is also very different than the 360, because the process now really, again, you won't be able to just pick on anecdotes or certain quotes of individuals. You're going to be focusing on overall themes of what's working well, what's not working well, areas of growth. And so that's why we changed it to targeted feedback survey instead of, and because feedback is important, and so that's why I think the title, yep.
Okay.
Really good question.
Scott, any thoughts or concerns about anything you're hearing so far?
No. It sounds like a really, really important layer. And I think all feedback is good feedback, and the fact that it's targeted and the way that it's laid out, I think it could be very, very helpful.
Great, thanks.
Great. Any other questions from other board members? All right.
So what kind of, I do have a question.
Yeah, of course.
I'm stuck on the names thing. What kind of homework do we have to do before we have that meeting? Like, I'm worried about getting the right people attached to the right standards, you know?
Oh, you'll have time. So you don't have to do it, so in the planning meeting, you don't have to figure out who your stakeholders are. In the planning meeting, you'll identify what those standards are, then you can have a separate kind of meeting with the superintendent to determine who those folks should, who those folks should be. So you don't have to do that in the planning meeting, I should have made that clear. You get some time, and then depending on when you want the evaluation survey results, you can work backwards and kind of figure out, all right, how much time do we have? And usually, I give folks about one to two weeks to come up with that list, but it depends, too, on how fast the turnaround is and how, but again, because you're starting the process so early, so kudos again, I don't think you'll run across that. I think you'll have enough time to just kind of plan it and have it set in stone, and not have to be worrying or rushing or turning things fast around. But I have had to do that in the past. But that's why you have to agree upon at the beginning of the cycle to do the targeted feedback survey.
And the development of the list, does that have to be in public, or just the adoption of the list?
That's a good question, and I believe, as long as there's not a quorum, but let me get back to you on that question, because that is a really good question, because the whole process should be an open session, but the selection of the individuals might be something that the chair may be with the superintendent, but let me get back to you on that. That's a really good question.
Yeah, it's a great question.
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Because I can't imagine sitting here and throwing individual names around and debating.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah. No. And that's usually, I don't usually see that. I usually just get a list from the board secretary, so pretty sure that's something you have.
Yeah, okay. That's a great question, though. Thank you.
Yep. And I'll double-check, but you might be able to even hold like an executive session, as long as it's under that provision of the superintendent's part of the evaluation process. That might be a way to kind of have it, so that way, all board members are involved in the superintendent, but I will get clarification. But that would be my recommendation, as long as it meets the provision to have the superintendent evaluation. I would hold an executive session, so that way you don't.
Would you be willing to ask around and see what other districts typically do with this process?
Yeah.
I'm sure there's got to be a precedent somewhere.
Yes, I will. Well, if anything else, you know, pops in your mind afterwards, I know sometimes it's a lot of information, long days, long meetings, so feel free to reach out if another question arises later. Okay, so now I want to focus on the timeline. And so some of you maybe have seen this, it's really kind of a cycle, we call it. And so now you're starting prepping the cycle for '22, '23. So typically, March through May is when you do your pre-evaluation, so that's kind of like you're prepping. You decide what process, if you're going to adopt the superintendent evaluation workbook that we developed with COSA, you decide what criteria of that. If you do decide to adopt that, then which part of those five parts are you going to have be a part of your process, because two of them are optional, but recommended. And then you also want to make sure, as you're developing your timeline, you look at the superintendent contract for deadlines of when the evaluation should happen, look at policy CVG on superintendent evaluation. So again, making sure your timelines align with what your documents say. So that's something you also want to do when you're starting your evaluation. And if you look at the timeline that's in your packet, I made some changes, some recommended changes to it, and you'll see kind of, it follows along this kind of process, and you'll see where I inserted that part of, look at the superintendent contract, look at policy CVG. Then from June, once you've adopted all of those pieces, in June through December, you want to have what you call your check-in meetings. And so that's just a time for the superintendent to just kind of, and for the board to check in on the progress, ask any questions, clarifying questions about where you are in terms of the progress. It's just a great way to kind of avoid surprises, and that's why we recommend having check-ins. And so we recommend quarterly check-ins, one in July, one in October, and then the final in January. The final, though, is called the superintendent self-evaluation. So that's, it's part of that quarterly, but it's kind of its own separate thing for the third check-in. Just make it be the part of the superintendent's self-evaluation, where he presents his artifacts and whatnot, which is going to be simultaneously, as you can see in your timeline, once you also do your summative evaluation. So you can kind of figure out when, when is the best time to do that? So typically, January or February. And then, January through March is gathering all the information. So making sure you've done already your TFS, if that's what you decide to adopt, making sure the board already did their self, their own observations or self-evaluation, making sure, you know, the superintendent then does, that's where you do essentially everything, which is, I think, in your timeline, I can't remember what line. And then evaluation results, again, making sure that they match with the deadlines and the contract and the policy. But typically, we recommend having those completed by March fifteenth and then providing a summary result, or a summary kind of executive summary, so to speak, that you can just provide to the community, to the public. And just a great way, again, to hold the system accountable and let the community know that you completed and are holding the system accountable by doing a superintendent evaluation. Doesn't have to be super detailed, like the summative evaluation summary, but it's just great, just a quick little blurb, which I believe you did last cycle. Great. And then evaluation conclusion, that's when you're on your final contract year with the superintendent. And so it's just up there as a reminder. And if you do have questions about renewal, contract renewals, contact your legal counsel so that you kind of are making sure you're following that process as well. And again, that's for the last year of the contract, when you're approaching that. Another kind of visual, which is a part of the evaluation toolbox, some of you may have seen it. So it's essentially kind of what I just showed you, it's just two separate ways, visualizations. So whichever one you prefer, if you prefer more word stuff or if you prefer just a quick visual, that's just another visualization to help you establish your timeline. So did everyone get a chance to look at it? Or do you want to spend just maybe one to two minutes to take a look at the timeline and kind of look at the changes that I recommended? So I'll give you about two to three minutes to look at that, the twenty-two, twenty-three superintendent evaluation timeline. And I can leave this up if it helps. And then we can follow the same process, ask me questions or clarify questions.
Would we be prepared then, now this is a question of the board, would we be prepared then for doing the second step in June? Is that the, are we on, kind of on track then to be ready to approve any new superintendent goals, all of that at the June board meeting?
We'd have to talk with Scott about that, I think.
Will that be two weeks from today?
Right.
Not sure I'd be prepared by then.
Okay.
And there's always flexibility with the dates. Those are just the recommended and kind of aligning with what the workbook kind of recommends and kind of what I walked right here, but you can always, you know, be flexible with the dates. You just want to make sure you meet the deadline, March fifteenth.
Well, and it, where, does it say that, like, maybe in June, that's when we'd need to formally adopt the tools and the timeline and the, if we are going to do the targeted feedback survey?
Yeah, I think Ju-, June, even late June would be fine, yep.
And that doesn't, Scott doesn't have to, we don't have to have the goals created at that point. We, we will have to fill that goal piece in, you know, as soon as we can.
So you would ideally have it, because it is going to be part of it. I think you can have those goals, because with the check-ins, if you have the goals, you also are checking in on the goals as well, if that's a part of your evaluation process. So you want to check in on the goals and on the standards. So I would recommend, you know, if you're pushing it on time, and I don't know, typically, how long do you think that would take? I mean, it varies depending on, you know, the board's work and kind of what's coming up in your calendar. But I, you know.
Well, if we adopted the tool, let's say we all agreed we wanted to do the targeted feedback survey and we agreed once again to use the OSBA goal list and standards list and all that. If we didn't formally approve his goals until July or August, I don't understand what it would matter, I guess.
The check-in, first check-in is?
July.
Yeah, June or July.
Ideally, yeah.
Well, ideally, but I mean, I guess.
You can push it if you wanted to. So July and August seems like a better time to have the goals completely done and for you to just adopt everything and see the goals, how they're going to be, and all the other pieces. I think that, that's fine, and you can just push your check-in meetings to, like, you could probably still do October as the fir-, maybe instead of July, October, or even August potentially could be your first check-in.
Well, what if, what if we shoot for the June work session on the twenty-seventh to, to go over the goals? Would that be, I mean, that's almost a month. Would that be enough time for you, Scott? I don't want to kill you, so.
If you'd prefer July, it's fine to say that.
I think it's fine, too.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
I prefer July only because it rolls right into our Leadership Institute. This is absolutely something that I would share with our leaders in Silver Falls, and that would generally be the time where I'd be developing that anyway, so.
That's fair, okay.
Yeah, so then you can plan even for your first check-in to be like September, right before the school kicks in, just to be like, all right, what's your plan? You know, school's about to kick in, that might be something you would consider. And then have your second check-in be November, early November, so that way you don't come across the holidays. So yeah, the times are flexible. Again, even the fact that you're walking through the timeline so early, that's, that's why. So that way you can have flexibility with those dates.
So would we want to do it at the first board meeting in July, the, the regular one? Or would we want to wait till the work session?
Probably at the work session.
Yeah, work session.
Yeah, that's fair.
Thank you.
So you're saying August, have everything be, everything be adopted, the process, the goals?
Yeah, the end of July or for August.
End of July, early August.
Yeah.
And then you can kind of aim for September as your first check-in, like late September as your first check-in, maybe early November as your second, even December, if you really wanted to. And then, again, that last one is the superintendent's self-evaluation, so it can align exactly with what you already have as February, January. So I think that would be fine. Yep. What does other board members agree? Yeah. And then the check-in meetings, they can, ideally, they're in an executive session, just making sure that the discussion, again, follows the nature of the executive session. So making sure it just falls under that provision of superintendent evaluation. But typically, those check-ins are an executive session, that's usually the best practice. And again, it's just a time to check in on the progress, have a conversation with the board and just kind of discuss, you know, what's, what's happening, if there's like some delays because something else is taking precedent. You know, you can just have those discussions and not be surprised when it comes to the evaluation.
Yeah, Scott prefers his feedback to be an open session and that we talk, to avoid surprises, we make sure that we communicate ahead of time.
For the check-in meetings as well? Okay, yep, you can do that, too.
No, you're welcome to change that at any point, obviously. But that's been the practice so far.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. We did it all in open session, so yeah, you can do that if the superintendent prefers to have them, yep. Great, any other questions about the timeline? I made very minor tweaks. I didn't include the TFS, because I don't know if you still want that to be a part, but you can, it can be a part of, it is included as part of, you know, you have to adopt all the parts of the, of the tool if you decide to go with the OSBA workbook. But you can add, you know, when you want that to be completed tentatively, the recommended dates that I said for the planning session, which is November through December and January. And then the results, probably, like you mentioned, I think that was a great thing to mention, like, so that way it doesn't skew or bias your own self-evaluation that you have to do individually as board members. Maybe do the targeted feedback survey just after that, because you can complete that before and then send that, Debbie could send that out, so everybody has a chance to kind of look at everyone's and then have it as part of the summit of evaluation.
I would really prefer that, just because it would be, to, to make it the maximum helpfulness to me, it would be really great if the board decided you want to do that as a best practice.
Got it, so we could build that, those dates in to this, too? Since we're going to have to add the TFS in here anyways, so.
Yep, yep, exactly, yep, absolutely, yep. And they can be tentative dates for now, you're not going to know the exact date, which is fine.
I think the TFS is definitely the piece we were missing last time. I think we got some of our own feedback on people wanting that opportunity. And so being a little bit more strategic about it, being able to, to find, you know, determine exactly where we want information to come from. I think it's a good, it's a good way to do that, it feels a little less haphazard and.
And we all have the consistent feedback together, not just one-offs here and there. We all have the same feedback.
Yes, that's, that's the most important part to me, because, you know, we talked about having board reports for different work groups that we're on so that we could all have that information, but then we were kind of guided away from that. And to me, the idea there was that we all have the same information, but then is it really the same information? I, I don't know, but this is like a key, a key step in, like, we all have a baseline understanding of, you know, this data that's coming back, so. I, I, I'm in favor of the TFS.
Yeah, for sure, I, I think it's a good, you know, it's a good ad. I, I don't see any downside to it.
Yeah, typically, it's, it's a useful tool, the feedback I get back. And again, we are having conversation about, you know, if you could see those in the future, hopefully, the questions and how they are tied. But for the results, the way I do it typically provide, you know, data analysis, show you kind of total response rate. And typically, community folks, there'll be a lower response rate.
Sure.
And folks ask me sometimes, so how much should we ask? Do we ask a hundred, should we ask fifty? So you want it to be a manageable size. And sometimes I recommend bumping up the number for the external folks, just because usually there is a slow, a less response rate. But that could have fluctuated, the ones I did this past year had a lot of other factors, like the pandemic, that also maybe caused some issues. We heard from our community listening sessions that some parents are tired of emails, and so that could have had some factors as well, some contributing factors. Okay, so I want to make sure that we end on time at eight, the, the one hour that you allotted me. So this next part is around the scoring or the ratings. And kind of, my understanding is just to clarify in particular what those ratings mean, like the meanings of a four, of a three, of a two and a one. And we kind of talked about that in open session before I let you all look at themes. We kind of discussed and agreed, what's a four mean? Because some folks may think a four means perfect, and that's not necessarily right. Like, it just means, for example, and same for the goals, you also are going to do the similar ratings. So in our workbook, we do have defined kind of a key of what those numbers mean. And I highlighted just some key pieces because, just so you can focus and kind of see what the difference is. So for accomplish, it's really that it's routinely, it's happening very consistently and it's a model for, for others. So maybe you could say for this standard, you know, Scott does it so well, other superintendents and this, and, you know, cross-organ should follow that. He's an exemplary model, because he is excelling. Three, effective performance just means that not routinely, but is consistently meeting the standard. And then four is just occasionally, so not consistent. That's really the key, is it's not consistent. And then ineffective is just, it doesn't meet at all. And then you could, can also say NA, although I don't recommend typically say not applicable. You want to try to give a score, and you also don't want to use decimals. We recommend to stick with those solid numbers. And so this is just a quick key for kind of differentiating. I also provided an Excel, I put it together in an Excel format. Last time you had it in a Word doc, and that can be a little clunky scrolling up and down. So you should all have a copy of that, take a quick glance at it. But you'll see I inserted the key at the top to just kind of help, and I shortened kind of the definitions or the meanings of those numbers, so it's just easier for you to kind of associate and use that as your guide as you are scoring those standards and the goals.
And Janet, the bullet points are not on here?
The descriptors?
Yeah, I'm assuming that we could.
You could add them. I thought about adding them, and then I thought, well, maybe it would be better if you had your workbook to have as the descriptors, because otherwise it will become very long. It wasn't a part of the document, and I, I would recommend, unless you really want it all in one, but then you might come across not having it in one single page. And I was trying to aim to have it as one single page, and maybe you can just have the descriptors. What I could do is maybe put the descriptors and the standards on one page, so you have just one page with all of it. Instead of flipping through that workbook that has the descriptors and the standards on ten different pages, maybe you can have just one document, kind of like your cheat sheet, to have that and then this Excel doc to just work off of.
Also, maybe one, one point of just, again, formatting, one through four is coming up on the front with the goal statement, and then five through eight is coming up on the backside.
Oh, if you print it layout, so it's, it was printed portrait. I'd recommend, sorry, I should have been clear.
Or if we can have a digital copy, you know, I mean, that's perfect.
But yeah, I would recommend printing it. If you printed landscape, I think that would avoid that and you would just have it on just one page.
Okay, yeah, because, I mean, I'd like to use this like digitally, without even a paper, you know, just to, to use it, you know, in the, in the file format that you have.
Yep, I have it as a file as well, so if you prefer digital, I think that's a great, and then maybe just print it, have a Debbie print it out the day when you're going to do the summit of evaluation, yep.
Okay.
And then Janet's gotten a little more specific about the feedback that we provide. Because before it just said basically comments, right?
Oh, right, yes, and so I, I would recommend, thanks for bringing that up. I would recommend to be very specific, maybe provide two to three examples that you've observed, because again, it's your own observations, of how you think, you know, and it matches and aligns with the number you give. So if you gave a four, how, you know, you could even say routinely, if you wanted to, has done X, Y, and Z, but be very specific on your example. I think that would help.
I think it's also good to ground on the key, too, because I think people are like, well, maybe, maybe three's not great, you know, it's not a good score. Well, and three is clearly a good score, right? It, it, it doesn't mean that they're not, that Scott's not doing his job if he gets a, even a three across the board. You know, so I think it's really helpful having this key to add those descriptors saying, you know, three isn't bad, you know, and, and two is kind of like almost there, but, you know, it just, it gives nice and nice substance to those scores. Because I know that was a big point of, not contention, but a point of discussion we had last time.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and that's why I like to spend time just before you dive in, but it would be helpful to do it prior, like we're doing right now. So again, kudos to you for starting this conversation and process early. Any other questions about that? Or do you, do you like how the meanings are kind of defined here? And then I, again, just made it a little bit shorter, the description, and just focused on kind of those highlights to make it easier and visually easier to kind of read it, not have too much text on paper. So I want to make sure that, you know, we make this process as efficient as possible for you folks. So that was just a snapshot of it, but yes, I can send it in digital form if you prefer that as well.
And we did talk about the idea of looking at themes ahead of time, so that we can save time during the meeting.
Yes.
So this would just be step one, basically, where everybody creates their own, then it's shared. And then we look for themes, so there would have to be.
Another form, maybe?
Well, I don't know if it's a form or what.
Or like, you know, Debbie put it all together last time, kind of put everything into a summative, kind of, everybody's comments raw together, and then we went through the themes. But I like, I agree with you, we got to go through those themes on our, kind of as our homework, not, not in the meeting.
Yeah, so this could be kind of the form for you to do your individual, and then all of your individuals gets put into another, or into the same kind of form, but then you have homework to look at themes prior. So maybe even scheduling when, yeah, scheduling time for how much you need to do that, yep. Yeah, that's a great point. And the themes are really just areas of strength and then areas of growth. That's what I would kind of stick to, to help you keep it a bit more narrow and focused, yep. Yeah, that's a really good point. So once it's all put together, the Excel sheet is going to grow, obviously, once you. So once it's all put together, the Excel sheet is going to grow, obviously, once you have all your comments. But maybe by being more specific, you could also put parameters if you wanted to, but you know, don't make it more than six hundred words. Or you know, you can kind of, if you wanted to. But I think, you know, if it does grow bigger, I think that's okay as long as you have that time to be able to review it and keep it. Again, it probably wouldn't be more than like three or four pages, I would think with this format of Excel. But lessons you can continue to learn, as I say, it's continuous improvement. We tell boards, you know, your best practices and the research I bring to you is consistently or constantly, sorry, improving. And so that's why it's important to do trainings, to review your processes every year. Because maybe you'll figure out, you know what, I didn't like this or I didn't like this form. Until you actually put it into practice, I think is when you'll identify what you liked, what you didn't like, right? So, yep. Scott, do you have any questions?
No question.
I want to make sure I don't avoid you since I'm just kind of facing over here and make sure I turn.
No, it's nice to, to get started, to have an idea in late spring what this might look like. And my mind is already spinning on things. So this is good. It's really good.
Great. And again, if you have questions, feel free to, to reach out. So kind of your next steps, you kind of already talked about it. It's really just adopting your process, adopting that, what parts of the five part. If you do want to do the TFS, then building it into your timeline. If you do want to do the goals, building it into your timeline, which you already started to discuss some key dates there or some tentative dates. And then just adopt everything. And I believe you said you wanted to adopt everything by early August is your target.
Right.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, any other questions or comments?
Helpful.
Good. And look at that, we ended right on the dot. I always tried to. Awesome. Well, thank you so much. I hope you found this work session valuable. Again, we are here to support you. Hopefully I'll see some of you. I don't know if you're coming to our summer board conference in July.
It's on the agenda tonight.
Oh, is it? Oh, how exciting. Yes, please register if you can. We have a really great keynote speaker. I'm also, aside from the board development specialist, the program planner, so I pick out the keynoters and whatnot. And our keynoteer is going to be focusing on community engagement because that's been of high interest. But we're going to have also a lot of work sessions on public comment best practices, a lot of great workshops. So hopefully I'll see some of you there. And if not, our annual convention also will be happening in November.
Okay.
Well, it has been my pleasure being here. It's great to see you all and as always, feel free to reach out.
Thanks, Janet.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks, Janet.
Thank you, Janet.
Yeah, thank you.
So while she's kind of wrapping things up there, I heard what I thought was essentially unanimous consent that the targeted feedback survey is, so I think, I think that'll just be part and parcel of our planning as we move forward with some of this timeline and you guys will be hearing more from Jennifer and me and Scott. So, okay, very good. Any, any other discussion on any of this before we move on? That's going to move us to the bond update.
I'll just wait for Daniel to queue that up. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Janet. So I have a, I have a couple of different updates tonight. I'll start off with the bond and where we are with that. Steve Nielsen and I continue to learn all kinds of things about this process. This is the first time really that he, that he's been through this and obviously it's my first time and it's a long road. What we found in terms of the procurement process for the bond consultant and bond committee facilitator is that it, it's a really fine line between us, what would be called a sole source, where you wouldn't go out for bid. But then if you really want to be on the safe side, it's really best to stick with the, with the formal procurement process. And so that's really, we, we checked with Garrett Heman Robertson. They specialize in contracts, contract law, that they just say to err on the safe side and we want to make sure we're doing this right, just to make sure we're following the formal process. Nothing major has changed in that respect. So the details that I shared with you before, those, if you wanted to ask me what I felt, that I feel like we'll be going in that direction. But we just want to make sure that we're, we're tapping the brakes a little bit to complete our due diligence.
Okay.
The goal after that, I, I should have all the information, the contracts to you and all of the dates and timelines for the bond committee by our July board meeting, if not before. I just want to be conservative on that and, and under commit and over deliver. So that's where we are now. The next order of business will be the polling data. You'll have the polling data before the bond committee starts. And so that would be the next step that we'll be taking. That is a separate cost. I've gone over that with you before. I've almost finished with the bond committee selection. Thank you all for giving me the names and suggestions of folks you think would be really helpful. Originally, the expert advice we got was fifteen. There's no way I'm going to be able to make it to fifteen. It's going to have to be twenty. And I just feel that in Silver Falls, we need to make sure that we have the widest breadth of, of voice possible. Again, because it's the bond that our community will support, not necessarily the one we want. So we're tussling with that right now. I've also listed the help of some other civic leaders to come up with a list on their own of twenty names so that I can then take those from those leaders and compare. Which i- is just my best thinking on how do I get the, the most input on, on what this list should look like. And so that's where we are right now. We finished our listing session last week at Mark Twain. We'll be at Robert Frost on Thursday, six to eight. It is striking to me to see the difference in community engagement that we experienced in the K eights and that we experienced at Mark Twain. Janet, you were there, Jennifer, Lori was there. Thank you for, you each had a chance to speak at the end. So we're hoping for a larger turnout at Robert Frost. We've also encouraged the Mark Twain community, if they missed it, then to come to the Robert Frost listening session. We'd love to have you there to, to listen to your feedback. There won't be a separate report. What there will be is kind of like an addendum. Jerry put together the report already for Mark Twain. It's two pages. It basically goes through the same format that we did in the, in the K eights. And we just want it as a, as a supplemental document, if you will, to all of the long range facilities planning, all on our website that encapsulates our journey towards the bond. And so after that's done, we'll be doing the high school and middle school in the fall. I think the high school will be a really interesting project that, that we'll be working on with Jerry. And there's a whole lot of other things there that we want to get to the bottom of in terms of extracting more information on how we can do our jobs better and how we can progress towards hopefully a capital improvement bond. And then we will be starting around two of K eight listening sessions. That will be, these listening sessions will be an annual thing. So we will never finish with our listening sessions. Even if we are lucky enough to pass a bond with a lot of hard work, we will still have listening sessions. One school community a year in the same format. I'm not sure if we'll have a, a separate facilitator for that, probably something we can take on. But I just want you to know that that is something that we need to embed into our culture here. So those are the updates for the bond. We have three board observers, by the way. I wanted to say a big thank you to Owen and to Jennifer and Janet, who will be our bond committee observers. And any questions on that information?
I just wanted to say I think it is a great idea to compare notes with other civic leaders because we are generally in circles with people with families and kids in school and those are not the only people who vote.
Yeah, was really interesting because one leader gave me their list and it had a, a local barber shop owner. And I said, well, that's interesting. And he said, well, of course, it's a, it's a point of conversation. It's a local conversation point, so you're going to want to have somebody like that. So these are all things that I probably would never have thought of. So again, this will be one hundred percent a community effort going forward. We can use all the help we can get.
Will the second round of K eight listening sessions have a different content? I mean, are you?
Yeah, the, yeah, the questions will differ. Yeah, good, good question. They'll differ depending on the times we're in, you know. But most likely they'll be geared towards facilities until we get past how we're going to reconcile those. It'll be directed at that, but I always like to leave it open ended to really hear how our communities are feeling. So for Mark Twain, we had the facilities, but we also really wanted to know what would you like your programs to look like here, so.
That was interesting.
As you know.
Yeah, that was a great, a great component. It was really interesting. A rich discussion.
And that really comes from the, the, the many hours of planning that we put into the presentations for those listening sessions and really thinking about the questions and what will extract the most useful information.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Calendar proposal, you'll vote on that tonight as an action item. Just want to make sure we touched on it. So that's a weekly early release on Wednesday, starting the second week of school. We will shorten the school calendar one day and the day following winter break will be a non teacher work day. There will be a non-directed teacher work day in April and that is normally, that's always a non-student day. That's the professional development day. I just want to say again that this is a monumental gift that we're giving our teachers to protect time for our teachers to do the work on a weekly basis. It's about building the infrastructure that we need to make sure that our kids are a hundred percent on track and college and career ready. So even though some might not see it that way right now, this really is a big deal. And I cannot thank SFEA enough for working with us on that. In fact, the executive board, SFEA, came forward to us with a proposal that, that was really well received. And we're very thankful for, for them working with us through that. Any questions on the calendar? All good? All right, I want to talk to you about enrollment and enrollment, what we call enrollment hotspots. We talk about enrollment almost on a daily basis. The district leadership team, myself, Dan, Steve, and Leslie Roach meet twice a week. Two hours each meeting, so four hours a week, and this is a standing agenda item. The reason why enrollment is so important this year is because of the hit we took two years ago when the pandemic started. We have always been a positive net in district in terms of enrollment. So the ten percent drop to us was felt, you know, by magnitude of ten over, say, other urban districts that are kind of used to students coming and going. So I put up here two examples because enrollment drives everything. Enrollment drives FTE. And one of the things we've really tried to do the past two years is really focus on a resource allocation model for financially as a school district, how do we defend the allocation of our resources? That is really important to be able to do for our taxpayers and for people watching what it is that we're doing. We have a clear system now for how we allocate resources. And we allocate resources in the form of FTE because eighty-five percent of any operating budget is wrapped up in?
People.
People. And so there are two hotspots up here I want to go over with you. But I would say that each school is grappling with its own enrollment issues. We don't have a school that doesn't have at least a few issues with enrollment. Some of these were already, we already saw these before the pandemic. In other words, we have a historically low sixth grade going to Silverton Middle School. Normally it's around a hundred sixty. We only will have a hundred. Mark Twain, Robert Frost, used to be seven hundred fifty kids combined. Now there's six hundred. So, so we have some really, really concerning enrollment issues at each school, but I picked out two. Number one is Central Howl. That's one, to me at least, that is really at the top of the list. Central Howl is curious because they went from one eighty to one twenty almost overnight. That's sixty students. So if we use an average of twenty-five to one, twenty-five students to one teacher, that's two hundred fifty thousand dollars right there that the district is, does not have as income. But we only reduced that staff by one teaching position. We did not lay anybody off. We've nev-, we've never laid anybody off since the pandemic started. So that was a position that became open and then we just didn't hire it. And so they're still at six teachers right now. Ideally, Central Howl would be at seven. So they're slowly increasing back. They're projected to be at one fifty-nine. That number right now as we speak is at one fifty. I expect it to, to surpass one fifty-nine, if you wanted my gut feeling on it. So they're trending towards an additional one point oh FTE. So I'm, what I'm saying is it's looking really good. They're going to get an additional FTE. Keep in mind, because in Silver Falls, folks are not, are not used to enrollment issues. This is a standard practice in every other school district in Oregon. We get to May and we start seeing concerns, but it's only May. It's way too early to start throwing out FTE at schools, especially when you have a one point five million dollar deficit and you're crawling your way back from a ten percent deficit in student enrollment. So even in a good year, May would be early. Most school districts start allocating late August, September. We don't want to do that either, but we do want to take a conservative approach to our finances here. It is the, the responsible thing to do. So by the next time I present to you at the next board meeting, that could very well change. We just need to keep watching it.
Sorry, Scott. So if, like, say, take Central Howl for example, let's just say by July they're at one sixty-five.
Yeah.
And, and you're like, okay, I think we can add another FTE. You're, you're going to, your goal is to add that FTE before the school year starts, not after.
Yep.
Okay.
That is absolutely our goal. I can't tell you in the fourteen years I was a principal, how many times I've allocated a teacher in the beginning of October. Because what, what's, what's in October? The final count, right? So literally, we're going into classrooms counting students. That's what most school districts do. So I, I think we're in a really good position right now. And we know parents want to make plans and we have an open transfer process.
And we've heard a lot of feedback on this too. And again, you hit it right on the head. This is an unprecedented event for us in the district. This is not a problem we've had at any time that I can remember. I think a lot of us have all had kids in the district for many years and this is, this is an unprecedented event. And this is going to be a bit fluid probably for a while until that enrollment really stabilizes and increases again. And I think, you know, it, the one thing that comes to my mind, if we can ask of our public probably is just for patience. Because this is a bit fluid and, and I, I mean, I would probably be frustrated too if I went from seven to six at that, you know, if I was a parent. But I think we have to realize what, what, what was the genesis behind rationale for that. And, and I think just some, you know, we have to just be, be willing to be fluid a little bit for a while.
Well, and there, you know, when we started out refining our, our resource allocation model, you know, we as administrators in the district have, have really strong agreements over why we're doing that. So number one, it's that we don't want any kiddo to have, be in a blend class of more than three grade levels. Three as it is, is, I mean, to me is, is a lot and that's an understatement. But to have four, a blend of four grades, absolutely impossible. So you're going to see smaller K eights like Pratom or even Evergreen for that matter, who might have a slightly better class size ratio than, than say Central Howl. And that's because of that agreement that we have to have. Our configuration is so unique, there's not. Our configuration is so unique. There's not another one like it. And it's not as easy to explain all of these, you know, financial, you know, strategies that we're trying to employ in terms of our resources to, to the public. Although we're always looking for how do we take these complex ideas and, and being able to explain them. So we know we have work to do as well. But Creek is another one. That's right up there as well. Definitely trending in a positive direction. It was 233 students in June 21 and now 283. Their class size ratio averages 25 to one. So they are on the right path. And I would say my gut feeling is they're going to get there. That's my gut feeling. I, I could be wrong, but, but I really feel that they will be. And again, we're only in May. There are other schools that have not moved very much and I am concerned. Because if we do allocate another FTE, that doesn't mean we go out and hire. Nope. That means we might have a school that's overstaffed. And that means a transfer. So I really want to be honest with that also. That is the financially responsible thing to do. And so we're looking at that, that schools are resourced based on their student teacher ratio. Any questions on that?
I think in the last board updates, you had placed a PDF about enrollment. And so I use my basic math skills, but it was no longer double digits, but it had bumped up about 3.6. I had 3.5. I rounded it, but I think it was 3.6 that we increased. So that's encouraging and I would imagine that number is long gone now because that was probably a week or two ago. So it's good to see it going up.
You nailed it right on the head, Lori. It was 3.5. And it's continuing to get better. I do have as a link in my weekly updates. That link is updated once a week. Once a week by Heidi and we're watching it like hawks. So that's a really good thing. I, Steve Nielsen has told you before, he doesn't think we'll get back to the 400 that we lost for any one of a number of reasons. I'm really trying to stay optimistic about that. I just think our schools mean so much to our community and I could be naive, but I, I really do, I am hopeful that our schools will fill back up. And so this is all really good news.
One thing that makes, it makes it harder, I know. And I, I really know the Butte Creek history more than the other schools is terms of enrollment. But over the last 20 years, it's fluctuated from, say, a low of about 290 to about 325. And it will ebb and flow while the district as a whole has been moving up. Any one K eight building can see up and downturns, right? They're going to have a little bit of a bigger, you know, sine wave, right? And so we just have to be really careful that we don't react in a way that then short changes the future layout and, and sort of optimal design of those buildings. And that's something that I, I've been worried about.
Yeah, I, I worry about it too.
I think if I could, you know, one of the things is, you know, maintaining the unique, just the team environment or the unique culture of not being so quick to, well, if Butte Creek's down, let's transfer somebody from Butte Creek over here and disrupt those team chemistries that those unique schools have. So that's part of the waiting game process as well to try to not be, you know, in larger districts where people are accustomed to transferring more frequently. That just becomes something they know that can happen, but that's not the makeup of our district. And we don't want to be, you know, we've been very cautious with how we've, you know, in these, you know, both the Butte Creek and Central Howl reductions came from just attrition.
Right.
You know, and even the reduction of a Silvercrest teacher was someone who wanted to transfer to an in-town school. And so we were able to try to create win-wins where we can.
Right.
And trying to maintain those so that we aren't just knee jerking, oh, you're down, you're, someone's moving, you know.
Yeah, the long game is really important, I think, here.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, and we want to get away from any sort of, you know, forced transfer situation if we could possibly avoid it. Nobody wants to be in that type of position. I'll tell you what really concerns me though, and that is allocating more staff and then going into a layoff. And I'm here to tell you, after being through a horrendous layoff where I lost 27 teachers in my school alone, that will forever change the entire community in so many different ways. So that impact is far greater than any short-term impact that might happen to one of our buildings as a result. So I just, I don't ever want to go back to that type of a situation in 2012. And that's really what we're trying to do and, and I'm just really thankful for, you know, the work Steve's done on really, really being the voice of reason for us and our planning, our strategic planning and, and really keeping an eye on that. Any other questions? On that piece? I'll have another update for you at the, at the June board meeting as well.
Okay.
And that's what I got. Jonathan, I can turn it back to, to you.
Okay. Well, that's going to move us to item 5A, which is something that Scott just brought up, which is any discussion we want to have about the school year calendar. We've received what I'll call, at least as a whole board, we've received very little feedback, I think one email. I don't know if anybody's heard anything else or if you have any concerns or you want to talk about it.
I anecdotally heard that, you know, from some parents, they just, they like the predictability. It's once a week. It's not, well, is it this week? Is it next week?
I heard the same thing.
I mean, heck, I, we forget, you know, we have to put it on the calendar ourselves. It's always on the calendar because we'll forget. But now you know every Wednesday and I think that's good. And I think the biggest thing that, that our public needs also keep in mind, a lot of this, a majority of this feedback was given to us by our teachers, that this is most consistent for them and best for them. And I think we need to respect that.
Yeah, well said. Anybody else? Okay, well, this is an action item later today in the meeting, so keep that in mind. All right. So feedback for superintendent on policy review and update process, right? So, sorry, work group, I skipped ahead. Policy work group, thank you for catching that. Clicked on the wrong link. So policy work group, are you going to give us a, yeah?
Yeah, so.
Start by giving us an update.
So I, I wanted these, these couple agenda items on here just to talk to you as a board. And I, I think, you know, the, the policy work group has really served us well in terms of, you know, updating an incredible amount of policies. We would not even be a third of the way done had it not been for the policy work group. We are towards the end of that work, but, you know, we've had some things come up that, that you're perfectly aware of. And whenever, whenever I go through this type of an event where we have something that maybe was unforeseen, as you know, we had a couple work group members leave, I always want to try to extract as much learning from that as I can. So yes, that part was unfortunate, but what I want to do is try to learn from it so that we can do better next time. When I say we, I mean me. And so I guess what I'd like to know from all of you is this issue that we had with KGBB. And it could be any, any policy for that matter. I, it's not even important to me what the policy was on. What I want to know is how I can be a better superintendent to you. Because I'm here to serve you and I'm at your service. So I did put on here policy BFC just because we're talking about the process anyway. Janet and I had a really good talk earlier today. Janet pointed out a few things and I think she's absolutely correct that there are some adjustments we may want to do with that policy just to reflect our current practice. And we can talk about that in a minute. But what I would really like to know is from you, how, what types of things as board members would you like to see different? And not that you have to, you know, you have to come up with something, but if we're really serious about being a learning organization, what I'd like to know is, is how can I be of better service to you? Because I'm in my second year as a superintendent and, you know, a lot of these situations are new for me. So if I could open it up to, to you.
Can I start?
Yeah, go for it.
So hindsight is always 2020, right? And so we're trying to figure out what to improve for next time. The one thing that I keep going back to is predictability and predictability of the process. And I think that having, like, one of the questions was, you know, well, why do, why is this, is this policy coming up? And that is a good question. And so, you know, like getting really clear about when OSBA sends us a policy, what do we do with it? Like, I think that is, if, if we can make that predictable, it might be helpful for all of us just to know that, you know, this is the process and this is what to expect.
So when we get, I'm just going to rephrase so I make sure I understand. So when, when Debbie receives the update package, if you will, the list of policies that need to be updated, that if we could go out of our way to make sure that those are clear, that these are the ones that we've received and, and then I would take those to you to inform you of those before I take them to the work group or?
I don't know. I, I guess I don't have a preference per se, but I guess the understanding that, you know, if all of them are going to come to us, then that's fine. We know that they're all going to come to us. Or if they're not all going to come to us, is there a process for that?
Good clarification.
Yeah, so I think, you know, it might be easier just that they all come to us because then there's not a question around it.
Janet and I spoke about that this morning also, and I, I believe very strongly that the board needs to see all the policies.
I do too.
You don't necessarily need to adopt all of them. Some might come to you as optional, but I do think that you need to see exactly what comes to us. We also talked about those policies that come by every once in a while that I think the board may pay particular attention to, whatever sensitive subject it might be. That I bring that to you along with, I feel like I owe you my opinion at least, just so you have it. Even though I know that policy is the board's work and that you will determine what the best course of action to do with that is. But I do think it's really important that I point out to you what, what those policies are so you don't feel that they're lumped in with a bunch of other policies that, you know, maybe be way less consequential. That's been a reflection that, that I've had as well.
Well, it's, it's something I would appreciate. I think, I think the, you know, again, Jennifer said hindsight 2020.
Oh, yeah.
I really feel like if we had, if that had started out, this particular policy had started out as a discussion, hey, this one's come up, it's optional. What do you guys, you know, here, here's what, here's why it's recommended. Here's what you, Mr. Drew, think, however direct or nuanced your opinion may be on it. And, but, but just so, I guess I personally felt like when it was one of 15, just sort of in a big long list, it made the process for talking about it and ultimately the process for, that we ended up not adopting it. But that whole process became, I think, complicated because it was part of a batch that was being discussed typically. We've been talking about them as a whole typically. I mean, at the risk of oversimplifying, there's really two types of updates. There's ones that are largely per functional. There are things that the state law has changed. Some, you know, there's, all the policy changes matter, but there's a distinction between ones that are sort of, this is what you got to do now because the law changed versus ones that are, well, the board should actually have a conversation about this. It's optional. You guys need to decide what to do, right? There's a big difference, I think, between those two types of policies. So maybe somehow teasing out those optional changes, it would be really helpful to me.
Would you agree, Janet?
Yeah, well, and let me just clarify because I, I wanted to apologize to Dawn and Melissa publicly because I should have, I should have responded to this concern when it was articulated in our last meeting. The concern was brought up that, that the board was seeing policies based on some sort of curating process that was based in a political, some sort of political bias or political agenda. And as you know, Scott, that, that is could not be further from the truth. The policy committee has forwarded everything to the board. There has been no cherry picking and it would be completely inappropriate for a policy committee to decide which policies the board gets to see. And even your suggestion of how can we highlight those that might be more ripe for debate or is it? Again, it would be inappropriate for a policy committee to decide which ones those are, right? I mean, it feels like a transfer of responsibility and authority from the board to a committee of people who now have to decide, should this go to the board? Should this not go to the board? Is this a, is this a hot policy? Is it not a hot policy? So Scott and I talked a little bit, obviously if they're mandatory, they're mandatory, right? To your point, we got to do it. We did talk a little bit about what is the best way to handle these optional policies. Now, the statute did change. So the state said, here districts in their wisdom, you get to decide this now, right? And of course, the policy committee said, well, it's got to go to the board because the board has been presented with a choice. You may either dissolve this policy or not. But it's still a choice that certainly felt like needed to be vetted, deliberated, discussed, and then acted upon, which is eventually what we did. But I think to the point that Scott is making, we need to figure out how to do that in a way that works better for the board. And, and I think really it rests with Scott to say, you know, in my expertise, in my experience, I'm going to sort of carry this one differently, right? And pull it out and say, yeah, board, here's a different one. How do you want to handle this, right? So that it's not in the batch. And I totally get that. But I did, I did want to just address that point because I think it was, it was a little unfair and I know it was, it was hurtful to, to Dawn and Melissa to suggest that they were somehow biased in the work that they were doing for the board because they spent tremendous amounts of time doing the work for the board. The, the other thing, and I don't know if you want to go to this policy now, Scott. If we read our policy here, we're actually not following it. Is, and, and so, which is okay if we want to continue doing what we're doing, we just have to revise our policy. But if I'm reading this correctly, it suggests that actually we wouldn't discuss a policy unless we move to discuss it. In other words, it would stay as an information item for first read and second read. And if somebody on the board said, hey, I want to discuss policy ABC, we would actually have to move, to move it to the agenda for discussion with consensus. We'd have to vote on it. We'd have to say, yes, I want to pull that policy out and I want to talk about it. Scott and I talked about that too and we said, okay, how does that feel? Is that, that's not consistent with what we've done. We basically had them all as discussion items and then discussed them. Scott and I kind of felt like that felt the most democratic. It felt the most open. It felt the most transparent. But the board needs to decide, do we want to go back to this process or do we want to stay with what we've done? Because either way, we need to be, we need to be consistent.
You're saying stay with what we've done, meaning everyone will be a potential discussion item?
Correct, correct. And I just think, I mean, there are certainly pros and cons to that.
I don't think it's been a hindrance to have it be a discussion item.
I don't think so either.
Because if there's a batch of 10, I mean, I personally read everyone, I, I actually want to thank the committee for all the work that they've done. I read every cover letter and I look at every single marked up version and, right? So I find it really valuable. Now, if, if I don't end up having any conversation, that doesn't mean I wasn't, I didn't appreciate all the work, right? Because it was really helpful.
Right.
But we short-circuit the process really effectively when there isn't a lot of debate about a batch of policies. So it's not like it really, you know, was binding up critical time.
We don't seem to get entrenched in ongoing, yeah, yeah. And it feels more transparent to me. It seems like if they're information items, we're less inclined to talk about them, right? Because now you have to move, you have to pull it out. It becomes more of a thing. So we just need to, you know, the board can think about that. And what we can do is, is easily take this back and, and reword it and then bring it back to the board for approval if we want to continue what we're still doing. I don't know if anyone else has any input.
I, I completely agree with what I'm hearing, especially from Janet. And I too, I just want to say, Don Tacker was absolutely the architect. And I too, I just want to say, Dawn Tacker was absolutely the architect in designing the mechanism to update these policies that have been deferred in their attention for quite some time. And she, along with Melissa, had given endless hours. And Janet, you know this, because you've given endless hours too. And they really were doing the work of the board. But they were doing it so beautifully and so soundly, and we came across the policy that was tender. It's not going to be the last time, folks. There is going to be other policies like this too. It's just all a part of life. And I don't think it hurts for us to have good discussion. No matter if it hurts or makes your toes curl, the discussion needs to be there and it does need to go through the process. And that's my feeling. It's, and I think it is a very transparent means of doing that. Having that third read also allows for public to weigh in if they so desire. But I do believe that how we have been doing it is very positive, and I would hate to see this all change, because we had a policy that felt a bit contentious. What else is new? Things will happen again, and we have to learn to be civil about it, to be grateful for those who put in all the work. All of us do. And be willing to allow for proper dialogue. And we know what that looks like, because we're all adults here. So I think we should continue onward. I don't think we should be selective. And I just appreciate the process that's in place and what we've accomplished at the board with these policies. And thank you to you, Janet, for following up the way you have.
You're welcome. The other thing I want to encourage us to do, because we haven't really done it very often, and I just want us to remember that we have other people we can reach out to for input.
Right.
So someone had shared with me a policy that was discussed back in 2017 that was similarly difficult and contentious about arming the school resource officers. There was an awful lot of input, input. There was the police chief, Rick Lewis at the time. There was the PACE insurer. There were principals, there were teachers. And the board came to a decision, but it was so well-informed, and I just want us to keep that in mind, that, that, that we sometimes don't have all the information we need to make the decision. And if we can, if we need to slow things down to say, we need more information, let's reach out to people in the community, you know, let's see if the staff has, has folks that they can refer us to, to really inform us. Because I think that just makes a decision that we ultimately come to that much more robust. And it just would remind us that we have those resources. I don't know when they'll come up, who knows, but we should just keep that in mind. Sometimes we don't, we aren't equipped. We wrestle with these things as if we have to make these decisions sort of on our own. Ultimately, we have to vote, but we have people who can advise us, you know, who have more information than we do.
And I personally would like to see that with the board. I'd like to know what would happen if, heaven forbid, something happened in one of our schools involving a gun. What does that look like? What are the protocols? Who does what, when? How quickly can law enforcement arrive? Those type of things I'd like to know, especially when we're talking about policies such as these, because I have really no realistic background on it. And so, again, it goes back to making an informed decision based on what we understand and how our district operates.
This is really good, good feedback for me, because say we had something like that come up, and I brought the policy to you as a board, that might be something, as an example of something you want, might want me to bring back to you to learn more about. So if it's one thing I've learned since being in Silver Falls School District, and I love being here more and more every day, is that the only way to build trust is through process. No matter what side of an argument or perspective that you have here, process is predictable. So I would just encourage you as a board to, to stick to your current practice, because we're gonna have controversial issues that come up, and I just want to make sure that I'm being the most of service to you that I possibly can be.
No, I think that's a good point. You know, I think if I had it to do over again, would have suggested we just let it ride to a third read, it wouldn't have particularly, I, well, I can now say, I think effectively, it wouldn't have changed the outcome, right? But the fact that, I, I want to be clear about another thing, too. There was no ill intention, you know, I heard a lot of conspiracy theories floating around about trying to shut down people's voices and all of this crap. There was nothing like that in my vote, right? So the idea that I felt like I didn't need to have more information in order to know, I didn't want to move an optional policy forward any further, okay? Not changing policy doesn't require any requisite number of readings, right? So we already have a policy, it's been that policy forever, right? So we don't, I think that made this one more confusing, because all of the other policy updates, you know, they're proposed changes, and you either sort of roll with them. This one was an optional, brand-new policy, which made it, I think, a little bit of a different duck compared to most that we've looked at.
I see that.
And, and so, you know, when we just, when the motion came and the word table was used, there was a lot of confusion about the word tabling, and I wish in hindsight we'd use a different word. I don't think personally with my vote, it had anything to do with tabling a motion, which a lot of people conflated that with. But regardless, having it run through three reads wouldn't have mattered to me.
Right.
It would have been fine, I wouldn't have cared, voting the way I did a month later, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't really matter, right? So I just want to be clear about that. I agree with Scott, I agree with everything I've heard in terms of keeping it consistent. If we continue with a policy that is, that all optional policies move forward without any board discussion prior, then it's fine, we can have a three-read process on an optional policy, and it doesn't, I mean, again, again, I don't think it really matters. But I want to be clear, I don't think there was any ill intent. I, I'm gonna speak only for myself, but I really doubt there was on any of the board members' behalts.
I didn't think there was ill intent. I think for me, optional or not, let's bring it forward and run through the process. Because I don't know what optional really means. What does optional hold? In this case, it was this policy. Who knows what it's going to hold in the future? I don't have a crystal ball. So I think having all those available to us and then just take our steps as we move forward with it, I think that's just the best, safest way to do it. I think the only time I've had a little concern is when Ms. Tacker was here and she was providing input, and I think she still felt she was part of the conversation and she raised her hand. But we were having board discussion, and it's that really thin line. And I wish she had been part of the conversation, I'll just say it. She did raise her hand, we were in board discussion, but I, for all the work that she's done and the fact that she built the little arc that we're on, you know, I think she should have been acknowledged, and, and she was trying to contribute something, a part of the process, I believe, that we needed to understand in the moment that we were having that discussion. So that's where my concern was, it was like, it just felt a little cool on my end.
I can appreciate that.
But that's all I have to say. But again, it was board discussion. See, now we're getting into those technicalities.
Right.
So.
Jonathan, I'd like to, I'd like to speak just a little bit to a couple of these issues, since it was some of my comments, I think, that have been, were taken offense at. And I, I guess I never heard or understood until you said it tonight, Janet, that, that maybe there was a thought that they were being accused of curating, you know, policies to bring forward to us. That's not at all what I took issue with. I took issue with our policy committee advocacy. And really not, I, I don't have no problem with them being advocates sitting, wearing their, you know, wearing their, their hat as a, as part of the public, but doing it as part of the policy committee. And then I, so then I even said during that meeting that I will need to go back and watch and see what was said, because I really took offense to that advocacy that I felt at the time. And then when I did go back and, and read Dawn's comments, which fortunately she, she sent them to us, they are advocacy, that's, that's exactly what they are. And I also said that, at the time, that they felt threatening. And again, when I go back and look at those comments, they aren't so much threatening as they're saying, we have, we, our committee has looked at all the options, we have made the decision, and if you don't follow us, if you disregard us, then you're jeopardizing the process. That's what she says. And so I took issue with that, and that is in no way to diminish her or Melissa's work and the efforts that they've done. And I think she also took effort with some poorly word choice words that I made in the moment. I used the adjective very in front of, I think, left of center. And again, that wasn't meant in any way to disparage them, I would define myself as right of center, and I wouldn't take offense if somebody called me right of center. It was merely to point out that I don't want it to be an advocacy between board members and our policy work groups and, and other people that, and so I apologize, I guess to, I should say, I apologize to Melissa and Dawn that I said some things that you were offended by, and I, I really did not mean to say that. And so, I'm sorry, and definitely thank, thank them for all their work, because they moved us along a great distance.
Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you.
Because I didn't want to speak for you, but I had the same impressions that you just shared, and so I think the, you just crystallized it for me. I do think as feedback to Scott, it's really important, left, right, or center, that the work group not, in their role as a work group, be heavily advocating, that's your role, Scott, I think.
Yes.
And so, that's, does any, maybe, maybe Owen and I are the only ones, but I want to make sure if other people agree that, that he hears that feedback, because I think you crystallized something that really was important. Thank you.
I, I don't have feedback for Scott per se, but when Dawn was speaking to us, it was under the three-minute public comment guise. And so I assumed that that was her
Private citizen.
Personal
Yeah.
Feedback.
Private citizen.
And so that might be something to consider, well, I guess it is feedback for Scott, something to consider in the whole work group process.
Maybe, maybe it might have been confused that she was speaking on behalf of the work group, and maybe that, maybe that's where there was some gray area there.
Well, she referenced.
She did say she was speaking on behalf of Melissa and her.
Yeah.
I don't, don't quote me on that.
I, I think there was something along the lines of that at the end of her comment, but, but yeah, I, I, you know, I, I think that's just, you know, maybe there was some gray there, but, but her comments were, were very well taken and appreciated.
Yeah, sadly, we don't have hats, right? It would be so much better if there was a visual, where now I'm speaking as a private citizen. Now I'm speaking as a board member, now I'm speaking as a mother, as a wife, whatever. But we don't have that. And so it's hard to read at times.
And that's, that's excellent feedback for me. That's excellent feedback. Because you're right, how would, how would our public truly distinguish? I mean, we work in this, in this arena, if you will, all the time, so we, we know when the public, when our comments are ours as individuals or if we're speaking on behalf of our team or, or whatever. So that's good for me to know to
Right, but if somebody is up there saying, I personally feel this is really important, and here's why, my kids this and the community that, that's very clear. If you stand there and you say, as a member of the policy work group, here's how the process went, and here's, we did this and this and this as a work group, now, I don't think there is any question of what hat was on, really, not, not really.
Well, but, and, and does it, I mean, the, the question is, does it matter? You know, like, I, I, we, we can't take away somebody's right, freedom of speech because they're on a committee, right?
Not suggesting it, only suggesting that I think it's important that the distinction be drawn and, and that if somebody's speaking on behalf of the work group, they have to know that that could jeopardize how they're seen on the work group.
Yeah. I, I, again, that's, that's good, good feedback for Scott to consider, because it is his work group. I use the word committee, and that was not the right word.
You know, according to OSBA, evidently it, it does make a difference depending on what capacity you're speaking in, but how do you know that? I mean, that's the thing. I mean, you're one person with many different titles, or many different possibilities depending. I mean, here we are as board members, but soon as we leave, we go back to our friends and family, and then we are another role, if you will. The other thing is too, we're discussing this, how do we reach out to the two people that are on the work committee and provide an apology to them? How does that look?
Well, that's a really good question, Lori, and, and for me, what I wanted first is to talk to you, since you are my boss, and I need to clearly understand and to come up to speed and on where we are after the, these discussions around policy KGBB. So next on my list would be exactly that, Lori. There's a reason why the superintendency is an absolutely impossible position to be in in our country right now. And so it's wading through these different things to try to see, you know, where, where is the, where is the through point, if you will, on this? And there's no playbook necessarily. So again, in my view, to, to slow things down a little bit, to talk to you first, I'm your servant, and then I can proceed accordingly after that. So that was the first order of business, was, was tonight's discussion.
And I, and I think I would, I think I could speak for the board, I would hope that we could create a climate for Scott that would feel safe for him, that if he did have a recommendation on a policy that was contentious, that he felt principled in saying, this is what's best for students.
Yeah.
That we would absolutely welcome that position and still then engage in our own deliberation and vote according to our own conscious, consciousnessness.
Sure.
You know?
That is not uncommon.
And that that wouldn't affect, you know, I, I, I think I would respect and appreciate wherever you fell, and just appreciate the fact that we had that input, that we could then use in our decision-making. I think you're right, I think it's a really precarious job right now, given our political climate, and that we, I think we as a board can extend that to you. I know you still have the community to contend with, and I understand that that's, that's a real, also a really difficult thing, but, you know, we look to you to provide us with guidance on these things, and to know what's best for our community, what's best for our students, what's, what's doable in our current, you know, administrative structure. There might be some policies that aren't exciting at all, but that you say, oh, this is really important, because it really affects how we, you know, engage with, you know, whatever. And that's really good for us to know, we, we rely on that, so.
And I think that's, you, you brought up so many good points, and, and I think my brain is, is moving quite fast now, but one of the things is, when it's a superintendent work group, then that tells me, it informs me, that there are administrators involved along with community members and you, I mean, and a board member. So when I'm hearing these things, such as we unanimously, unanimously agreed to bring this forward, I am assuming at this point that everybody on that committee, admin, as well as community members, board members, were in agreement to bring it forward. So that's where I feel good, and I think everybody should have some input on that. And I really believed in that. And so I think that's where I was coming from too, in, you know, looking at committees versus work groups, what have you, because they all have their parameters. So, but yeah, you brought up some excellent points.
I just wanted to add how I think that following process is super important, because surprises during the meeting don't always lead to good things, and it's really hard to make decisions in the moment. Like Janet said, she wished she would have taken different action. I had the same feeling, but sometimes you don't figure that out until after the meeting, because things move really quickly and this is a very public because things move really quickly, and this is a very public situation. So I just wanted to put a plug in there for sticking to process. And obviously, we're trying to clarify process right now.
Right.
But when we in general stick to process, then we, it's, it's easier to, I think things go more smoothly, and we prevent situations where we have to think quickly because that's, sometimes the best outcomes don't come out of thinking quickly.
Right.
So can I ask you?
So, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I was just going to ask a question about our, our BFC policy here, adoption revision of policies. So we, we basically kind of consensus wise said that we'll, we'll take and look at all policies that OSBA presents. OSBA is nowhere in the policy. There's nowhere in the policy itself that identifies where these policies come from. Is there anywhere else that policies are proposed from, or?
There, there actually can be. Policies can be proposed, well, technically, they can be proposed by anybody. Oftentimes, if it's, if it's not a board member, it would be the administrative team, right? But as a general rule, part of what OSBA does is to help, help districts navigate the extraordinarily complex world we live in that's from a legal and/or, you know, appropriate policy standpoint.
So the genesis of a policy may be a legislative change.
Most.
And then they take that, synthesize it, and then help us say, look, you need to amend, change, or add a policy based on this state.
Nine out of 10 are exactly that.
Right. Well, we've had the public come in and say, a public comment, that they've urged us to adopt a policy regarding, you know, vaccinations is one that, that people brought forward to us.
Right.
Not that we took that up, but.
Right.
Yeah. And I actually emailed Leslie Fisher this afternoon and asked her, I said, you know, I said, Scott, now having this discussion about optional policies, like, what are the rules? What is best practice?
Right.
Are those just thrown out there, and if we catch them, we catch them? Are we, you know, are we required? Is it best practice to take all options published to the board? And she referred me to just Policy BF, which I read. And in answer to your question, Owen, it says, so it says that the last paragraph, you don't mind me just reading to you for a second. "The basic responsibility for initiating, reviewing, and recommending new policies or policy modification will rest with the superintendent." So he's primarily the person who's saying, here, board, take a look. "New policies or changes in existing policy may be proposed by any board member, group, or organization, staff member, parent, student, or other member of the community to the superintendent for the board to consider. The superintendent in developing these policies may be guided by the recommendations of the staff." So, you know, he, he's, you know, Scott is the one who's bringing them to us, but they could originate anywhere. Somebody could say, I think you should have a policy on wearing red hats every Wednesday. And Scott would say, that's a great idea. I'm taking it to the board.
Right.
You know?
Right.
We can, yeah. It didn't really get to my question about optional specifically. But I, I seem to think that, again, just best practice is that if it's an optional, then you have an option, and you should be in a position of being able to decide what you want to do. You know, otherwise, there's this sort of idea of like, maybe there are these policies that we're not even seeing, and they're out there. And that just seems to create more confusion and.
Agreed.
You know? But I think if, if Scott sees some that are difficult, we can certainly pull those out and say, hey, just wanted to separate this from the, without creating an undue drama, you know, where there doesn't need to be.
No, I, I think that's right. I mean, because if we had had a discussion item on it, he'd have known as superintendent whether to formally propose that policy or not, and it would have probably been really smooth. We'd have still had open public conversation on it. He would have made his decision, and we may or may not have seen it. Now, if he felt really strongly, he's still going to advocate for it, and we're going to go through three, three reads.
I will say one more thing, though. The one thing I would want to avoid would be kind of advanced decisions by the, I don't know what you guys call yourselves, the executive committee. When you look at an optional policy, saying, should we take this to the board or not? Saying, no, I think they're going to vote it down. We won't take it to the board because we can pretty much guess what they're going to do with it. That, I think, is really problematic. Because now you have basically eliminated the opportunity for maybe dissenters to have an opportunity to speak, for your public to comment. So, I mean, I know, I know the reality of it is that that might happen, but I would like to, to sort of just put a pitch in for discouraging that whenever possible.
I think my concern would be the predetermining, you know, predetermination of this. And I, I don't think that would be fair to the rest of the board members, frankly, even if you are the executive. I, yeah, I think that's where, yeah, I would, I agree with you.
That's a fair point. Thank you.
Yeah, and we are all supposed to, I don't know where I'm getting this information, so you can take it all with a grain of salt. But I think we're supposed to, I think it's a policy, we're not supposed to make a decision until we've heard all of the discussion and heard from each other. Like, that's oftentimes, sometimes while I'll reach out and say, hey, Tom, what do you think? Because I want to hear what everybody thinks because it helps me clarify, so.
Good point.
For sure. There was something too, and I don't know if this isn't appropriate to discuss, but you mentioned Jennifer, no surprises. And I'm having issues with that phrase because I don't want no surprises to prevent us as a board from having good, solid discussion, asking good, solid questions. And I think a case in point, and I'll bring this up. We were, I, I think we're in the throes of masks, of mask-wearing. And I think Erin, you made a motion, I don't know who seconded it, but you wanted to talk about what the public comment was resting on. According to Robert's rules, and maybe I'm wrong, but that's okay to do. And then there's not, so now we have no surprises conflicting with Robert's rules. So I see it as an intersection. That we need to talk and massage through, and maybe we did a little bit by respecting it. But I don't want no surprises to prevent a solid conversation or something to come up and come forward to the board because what Erin did was completely appropriate. But yet, some of us, like myself, said, wait, no surprises, you know? And so how do we interpret that? And I don't want that conversation to be prevented. So that's all I'm saying.
Lori, just because I want to put a bow on the
Okay.
five B and five C, because really what you're talking about, I think, is five D.
Oh, sorry, okay.
So if we could circle back just for a second
Okay.
to the policy work group. Any, any, Scott, go ahead.
I'd, I'd really like to know what our tenured professor, Tom Buchholz, has to say. Tom, you're the longest sitting board member. I'd be really interested to know your thoughts.
Well, I, I like our current practice of, of, of the way we handle them, and, and our policy needs to be adjusted to reflect what we've currently been doing.
The three reads.
The three reads, yeah.
I, I just wanted to say, just kind of, as you say, put a bow on this, is, is that I'm, I appreciate the discussion we're having because I think every one of us over the last few weeks has probably realized, hey, you know what? We, we could, we're not doing anything inherently wrong, but we can always strive to do it better. And I think getting together tonight to de, to, to discuss this in detail on, again, we didn't break policy, but you know what? There are some things that we can just do to be that much better, to be that much more transparent, to be, to prevent any folks getting upset when there was no ill will or intent because that's the last thing we ever want. We always want to keep that inclusive culture, the, the accepting culture, the, the hearing of, of all sides. And I think we do a really good job of that. But I think how we get better is having these conversations. So I think, again, I don't want to, I'm not trying to pat ourselves on the back here, but I think it's good that we all, you know, even though we may share different viewpoints on certain things, we've all come together and go, you know what? We, every one of us said, you know what, we can do better. So I appreciate everybody's discussion on that tonight.
One other thing. I appreciate you allowing me to, to add the agenda item late. Something I've been, you know, tussling with all weekend, deep in thought about this. I, I think the other thing is this, and I'll, I'll leave this just for you to consider after we move on from this agenda item. But in leadership, when we talk about extreme ownership, what we mean about that is pointing the finger right back at ourselves as individuals. So when we have a discussion, and we have really spirited discussions on our district leadership team, and if some of it causes tension, the first question that I try to get myself to zero in on is, how can I be a better teammate? So not, I was wrong, you were right, or you were wrong, and I'm still right. It's, how can I be a better teammate? And I would say that, that same concept applies if you're a board member on, on a school board or, or in the private sector, that we always shift it back to ourselves to say, how can I do a better job of leading myself in this type of a situation? And you've certainly given me that feedback so I can do a better job of, of leading myself through that. But I want to make sure we give Dan an opportunity to, to chime in as well because Dan's such a huge part of what we do.
No surprises, huh? I, I appreciate the, the depth of the discussion and all of everybody's, you know, kind of reflection. I think that's the key to learning, right? Is, you know, we talk about, students learn actually when they get the feedback, and then they reflect on it. It's the reflection on the feedback where we learn. So I think that that's been a real learning opportunity. I think there's just, looking back, there's a lot of different things we can look on. I think that, that, that KGBB being batched in there, and then we, we got in this habit of just kind of going through them, and then we had a, wait, what, you know, moment? And then, and then that kind of threw us. And so there's also, I think, some misinformation about what the, the policy was attempting to do, which created then confusion. So we just had a real nice recipe for disaster a little bit in the fact of what we were accustomed to doing, a momentary pause, and then bad intel that kind of led, led to this. So I think it's a learning experience for all of us in that, in that part of the process. But I think, just to echo Scott's comments of being able to reflect, being able to say, what's my role in this? And then moving the process forward. But I, I like where this conversation's gone in terms of keeping with the process because it's working largely, you know? So keeping with that, and then, you know, for Scott and I, working through, what's our role in the recommend, kind of that recommendation process? Because I think that part was really confusing to what is, what does the district leadership team recommend in regards to this, this policy? Because that clearly was a, a point during this that was confusing, so. Those are my two cents.
Thank you, Dan. We will continue with the policy work group. We will be taking a little bit of a break since we're towards the end of the year. But when we start that back up, and it will absolutely include members of our community. So I just want to make sure that I mention that to close that out.
Okay. Everybody good to move on, or any other comments?
Okay. Thank you all.
I believe that covers five B and C. Would we all agree?
Yep.
Yep.
Making sure. Right, five D, effectiveness of the board superintendent agreement. So this normally comes up for annual review. We're getting close to the end of this year. Seemed like an opportune time, especially given all the discussion we just had regarding sort of process and no surprises. Lori, you just brought that up. That's part of our agreement. So this is our opportunity to talk about the effectiveness of it. What, if anything, is in here or not in here that we believe ought to be? Do we have any specific thoughts as we go into the sort of annual review cycle of, of this working agreement?
I will, I can start. I think what Scott said about being a good teammate is exactly what my response was when Lori asked the question about no surprises. Is when we have a protocol, procedure that's predictable, then I think we're being good teammates because everybody knows what's going to, what they can expect. And it is, again, my perception is that when people are surprised when we're up here or over there, sometimes the outcome isn't so good because we don't have time to deliberate, to think about our, you know, pull our thoughts together. How am I going to word this? What, how am I going to say this? Or even like, you know, I want to amend the agenda. Hopefully, you've just taken some time to let the chair and the superintendent know ahead of time because it puts them in a much better position in order to do this work. So I, I like a lot of things that are on the, this, this agreement. But that would be my overall theme is, is how does this, how, how does this make us better teammates so that we can be effective in working together and build relationships instead of, you know, burn bridges?
I think there's also, you know, no surprises is kind of a catchphrase. And it can be used as a weapon, and it can be used as, as a good practice, right? And so one of the, the things that I think Jennifer just hit on that I really liked was this idea of just, if, if what you're going to say or bring up is going to be a surprise from the perspective that it makes somebody uncomfortable, that's a different category of surprise than if Steve's presenting the financials, and I think of something that I want to ask him. He may or may not have the answer, but I don't think anybody's offended that the question was asked. He can say, you know, I don't know. I can bring that back to you via email or at the next meeting. Those, there's a different category of surprise. And so I think the intent behind it, if, if I was just to describe it, is, is, is the thing that would be considered a surprise going to make somebody else feel really uncomfortable? I think that's the implicit nature of no surprises.
I agree, but how do you know if it is or not? Your intention may not be there.
You talk to them ahead of time.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but no, that, that's not what I'm saying. Sometimes you'll be talking along and dialoguing like we are now, and things come to your brain. And you want to ask a question, and you want to say something. I'm not doing that to create a surprise. I can't predict what's going to happen in the meeting in front of me or what's going to happen in the next 60 minutes. I should be able to have, all of us, all seven of us should have the freedom to ask a question. Not with the intent of making someone uncomfortable, but being informed. That's where I'm coming from with it. And I think that's where I find the glitch. I, I think there's so much, we can't control the narrative as much as we'd like to. We just can't. And so if we're going to use no surprises to start fencing in our movements and our questions, then there's a problem. Because we should be able to come here and speak respectfully and ask questions that we feel that are informative and needed. I don't, how do you know if I ask a question of you, Jonathan? I could be asking something, well, I noticed you wore blue socks. Why did you? And you might find it very offensive, like, it's none of your business if I wear blue socks or not. I, I mean, and that wasn't my intention. Oh, why are you wearing? I mean, how do I know this? I mean, how do I know until after I get the feedback from the person? And that's just where I'm a little concerned. I don't want to have so many restrictions that none of us feel comfortable stating things or asking questions or having that kind of dialogue. That's, that's just me, but.
I think from, from my view, I think we need to remember this is a board superintendent agreement. So the way that I look at it is, how does this govern my relationship with each of the seven of you? I know really, really well by now where each of your sociopolitical comfort zones is. Why? Because it's my business to know. That is my number one job to understand each one of my seven bosses. Likewise, it's your job to try to understand me at the deepest level that you can. And by you trying to understand me at the deepest level you can, you will realize which questions you cannot put me on the spot for. Because when we're talking about controversial subjects, what might seem like a black and white answer to one of you is an enormous algebraic equation that must be solved in my head at that particular moment. And so when I'm asked a question, it's not the black and white answer. It's how does it affect the dynamic with the seven of you or the dynamic between each of you that matters? And so I cannot impress upon the board enough that that is exactly why this position is absolutely impossible. And the way around that is for you to try to understand me to the best of your ability. I definitely make it my business to understand you. And if I'm wrong, I want to know about it, just like tonight. If there's something I can do better to be your, a better servant to you. So, so that's how I look at the board superintendent agreement. That especially in a board meeting that is in public and recorded. There's no other CEO in the country that has to deal with that type of, of an environment where I have seven bosses, every meeting is public, and every meeting is recorded. So you can imagine the spot that that puts me in when I'm asked a question that may seem black and white. So I just wanted to make sure that I, I could at least describe to you how that looks from my viewpoint.
I just want to. I just want to, sorry, Scott.
Go right ahead.
I, I think it's just really important to reiterate that, that, just to share that, to show that respect, especially specifically to Scott, that, you know, we don't put him on the spot for complex, like you said, complex-type problems. A lot of times, again, like Scott, you said it perfect. It may seem very black and white to us, but I think it's only fair to, you know, especially when sensitive subjects come up like they did at our last meeting, that it's important to let him take in the feedback, what we've talked about, take in the feedback, what the public has said. And if maybe there's a chance for an opinion or something at another date, I think it's, it's probably best not to put him on the spot there. That's just my opinion. I think that's professional courtesy, and I think that's a healthy relationship between board and superintendent.
You also have my cell phone number, and I'm literally 24/7 at your service. If you called me at 1:00 AM, I would pick up if it were one of the seven of you every single time. So please, just know that we should never be saving our conversations for a public meeting. We should be having these conversations all the time.
I think that's a really good point. I mean, in the interest of no surprises on any KGBB, but anything that's come up, there's never a time that I don't already know where Scott is and he doesn't know where I am because we talk whenever we need to about things. So I don't then need to solicit that information. There seemed to be a misnomer with this last go-around that, well, the board needs to know how the superintendent feels. That's an interesting comment. Really what I think that comment means is not that. I think really what that comment means is we want a public proclamation from the superintendent on his position on an issue. That's a different thing than asking if the board knows.
Which is also totally appropriate if.
It can be. I'm just saying they're different things, right? There was no, I knew where he stood on the matter, and he knew where I stood on the matter. And so I've heard, I can't even count the number of times I've heard this idea that the board needs to hear from the superintendent. I'm not sure that the board didn't hear from the superintendent. At least anybody who wanted to know certainly could have found out.
Well, it was recommended by the superintendent, by virtue of it being on our agenda. So I don't think we needed to ask that question. But I just wanted to reiterate, I think it's courteous to think about the ramifications of discussion ahead of time and to be able to communicate ahead of time. It's just like you're anticipating, you know? And we're not purring to be perfect at anticipating. But it's, it's the courteous thing to do.
Other comments on the working agreement? One thing I noted that wasn't on here, that used to be on one years ago, and I actually like our short version better. The other one was, I think, too wordy. But it talked a little bit about this idea of, of the board having good debate and dialogue like we do now. We ultimately cast a vote. Whatever the outcome of said vote is, we all then support it. And I, I noticed it wasn't in here. I reread it again today.
I think it's in policy.
Is it in policy? Okay, then maybe, I think it used to be in our working agreement, too.
It's in the Board Member's Rules and Responsibilities Policy, I believe.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. I, maybe I'm even mistaken. I thought it was also in the previous one. But regardless, I think that really is an important reminder, maybe something that ought to be a norm. You know, we read these as a norm. I believe that perhaps should be. I don't know, Scott, you have any thoughts on that?
No, I think that's a, I think that's an excellent idea. I, I do think there's one part in the board superintendent agreement we need to clarify, and that is when a board member has an issue with a colleague, another board member, or with the superintendent, what does that look like? Because I don't think that we're, I don't think we're descriptive enough in terms of what does that look like. I would offer that, that email is not a communication device. It is not. It is an information-sharing device. The two are totally different. So communication should never go on between board members or between a board member and superintendent about a meaty topic where you're trying to explain yourself, where you would normally use body language and intonation, things like that. So I would, when we redo this this summer, I would like to see some more specificity on what does it mean for a board member to reach out to their colleague or to the superintendent? Because I don't think it's enough to say, I sent him an email.
So that's communication agreement number three that you're referring to?
So not that we need to decide now, but I, I really would challenge the board to think about that. How do we resolve conflict? Because if we're just sending emails back and forth, I mean, I, I'm sorry, but that, that is, in my view, not professional.
I think it was mentioned earlier, too, you know, we're all adults. We're all, you know, striving to be civil human beings, you know? And honestly, the group of seven of us plus our staff, we're probably going to rub each other the wrong way, probably on one or more occasion during our journey together, right? And that's human. And I think if, if there's any offense that a board member perceives, or maybe one just says, gosh, I think I rubbed Jonathan the wrong way. I'm going to reach out to him, give him a call and say, I hope you didn't take that the wrong way. I think the easiest way is pick up the phone, right? We're all adults, you know? We, I think each one of us has enough humility that says, look, I messed up, and I offer my apologies, or hey, that wasn't meant to be that way. It may come off that way, but that wasn't how it was. And I just think we need to strive to really just pick up the phone before anything, before anything boils over, before anything gets to a level where it's, you know, you got to get a mediator involved or somebody else or another board member or the board chair involved. We can all work this out civilly amongst ourselves, and I, I really trust that.
I'm going to pile on to that. I've been thinking about this a lot lately, especially in the comment that, you know, Janet made about, you know, I wish I would have during that moment. We are a team, I think, and I think that we're becoming more and more like a team. And I just want to keep encouraging that. Just because somebody's the chair doesn't mean they're the be-all and the end-all. We all have the power to make a motion during a meeting, and we all have responsibilities to keep us all on track because frankly, one person, it's really difficult to do all that. So I just wanted to say, I think we're on the right track, and let's keep going.
Okay, anything else on, on this topic?
Thank you.
Right, 5E, OSBA Summer Board Conference. So Janet actually talked about this a little bit. I wanted to make sure it was on the agenda. We have the option of attending. The district will pay for our expenses if we were to attend the board conference. It's in Bend, I believe, again. And it's July 8th through the 10th this year. So Debbie has offered to help make arrangements, right? Yep. So if people are interested, reach out. And as Janet said, there's probably a number of really good topics.
And they added the virtual option as well this year.
Oh.
Thank you.
We have it in our budget, just so you know. We budget for this for all of you.
I'm probably interested in the virtual.
Yeah, very good to know. Any questions? Any other discussion on this?
It's, I recommend, I've learned a ton by going to those. Haven't been to one in a while, obviously.
Yeah, I think I went to two or three, and they were, they were really good. Okay. Next up is sort of a laid ad, but you've had some emails on it. So it's, well, policy J E C D A, and it's actually the AR associated with it, transcript evaluation procedures. And I don't know, Dan, is that you?
Yeah. So I've sent you some emails about this, or at least you should have gotten one from me about this, this policy. And so after looking into OSBA's sample policy, after we got another email from a concerned parent, we looked into this, and so I sent you both copies. And we met with the high school administration this morning, really wanted to, you know, what are the ramifications if we make an immediate change? And they, they did not foresee any. They saw some, you know, we're going to have to do a better job. We're going to have to build our own tools to ensure students have mastery of standards and have met proficiency in certain areas so that, that we are confident in awarding grades from non-accredited schools. So we have to build some of our own systems in place. But simply saying we're not going to honor credits from non-accredited schools is not where we want to be. And so they, they had no, they didn't have any concerns about making this change immediately. They know they have some work to do internally for moving forward. So Jonathan and I had a quick, interesting conversation on our way in here today because, because of the way we've been doing our policies, ARs have just rolled into the adoption process. But I don't think they have to be. I think that they're administrative rules that we can simply adopt or change and notify the board of. So kind of with your thumbs up, we just want to roll this thing forward.
You're notifying us.
We want to open up doors for our kids to come back to us.
Shouldn't be making it harder.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, Dan, you're, yeah, you're correct. We, we never used to see the ARs before. It was always something done in-house that you had to care.
Yep. All right, we will make that change.
Terrific.
Okay, any other discussion on that before we move on? Okay, so we have a special public comment related to our action item. So it's very specific to that, which is the calendar adoption. Any, there's nobody here, so anybody online looking to share their thoughts?
We have two people online. So I think Eliza was the first person to get her hand raised. So Daniel, if we could promote Eliza to panelist, and then Jess Miller will be next.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, I just wanted to speak tonight on the calendar, which I think is a brilliant idea to move your short days to Wednesdays. I hope an hour a week is enough for our teachers. But I also wanted to just throw out a completely out of the blue idea of adjusting our calendar to an amended year-round idea. And I looked at samples of our year-round calendars. This is for a future calendar, not for this one, but following maybe next year. So something where we take it from a 12-week summer calendar to an eight-week summer calendar, and therefore might be able to get a little bit more flow from one year to the next so that our teachers don't have to spend six to eight weeks catching up from the summer to get the kids back on track. That's about all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Eliza.
And Daniel, if you can promote Jess Miller to panelist.
I was just going to say that I appreciate and I'm looking forward to the predictability of that schedule. I don't know if this has been looked into, but whether there have been corresponding adjustments to after-school programs and how those timelines might be adjusted. And then listening in to the other conversations, I know that the public comment is limited to the calendar specifically, but my understanding is that if I do have a policy request, I should email the superintendent directly for that idea. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That was all, right? Or that was it? Okay. All right. Well, that's going to move us into our discussion of the school year calen, well, excuse me, the action for the school year calendar. We've had discussion, we've talked about it, we've just heard some public comment. And at this point, I'd accept the motion to adopt the 2022-2023 school year calendar.
I move to adopt the 2022-2023 school year calendar.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
Thank you.
All right, that's going to move us into exec session under ORS 1926602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations. Okay, I think we're back on, and we are returning to regular open session. And really, we don't have anything else on the agenda, so without objection, meeting adjourned.